I should be. Hello, whoever you are, wherever you are and whatever time it may be. My name is Ted McBride. It's Talk with Ted, episode 92. And I'm in Mill Creek, Utah, and it's October 12th, 2020. Election season, the shortened days, October brings the shorter days, the cold weather, the leaves, a change of seasons, and we're in the political season, and I had a politician knock on my door a couple of Saturdays ago. And I've got a peephole on the front door. I've got an old house in Mill Creek, Utah, 1858. The house was built. It's got a peephole, but I didn't use it. I was rearranging the podcasting studio and answered the door, and I saw a politician. I thought, uh-oh, because she had a sign in her hand, and I thought she's going to ask me to put the sign in the yard, and I tried not to be too political, but I quickly discovered that Julie Jackson, who I've got today, was, is running for Granite School District, the school board here in Salt Lake City, in the Granite District. And I told her, I had a great chat with her at the front door, and told her I'd check out her website before I committed to hanging up her sign. And I came in and checked out Vote For Julie or Vote For Julie Jackson. Was reasonably satisfied with her credentials, actually impressed, and I've had a couple of conversations with her since, and she's on the, on Zoom today. We had a failed attempt on Saturday to do this because I'm a technological idiot, but we were talking about, so now I've had a chance, this is a little bit of a redo, I should say. But I've had a chance to discuss things at length with Julie, and we're going to share that with folks today. And here in Mill Creek, Utah, it's not the first time I've had a politician knock at the door. I had Jeff Silva Streamy, the mayor of Mill Creek, last year on a Saturday morning, meandering the neighborhood, and I got chatting it up with him, and I had him on my show oh, over a year ago. I'm interested in sort of micro politics, politics at the local level, at the municipal level, and it really doesn't get any more micro than schools at the school level. And that's what I'm really interested in exploring today with Julie. And we live here in Mill Creek, Utah. This old house that I'm in, I think back to the education that existed back at the time. It was kind of like Little House on the Prairie, you know, with the old community center that doubled as a school, maybe a church, a little house on the prairie, you know, you always kind of think of Utah, but that was set in Minnesota, I think. But the education back then, way back then, was, you know, you paid a dollar to have your kid go to the school, or if you didn't have money, you might trade produce. And there's history here in Mill Creek about the first schools that were built, the Log School, I think in 1854. Another one, maybe in the 1870s or 1880s, but the third one that I want to talk about was Schoolhouse 33, built in 1893, the year before Utah became a state, and it's a significant school in Utah history and public school history, because it was really the first publicly financed school in Mill Creek, tax dollars to build a brick school. And it was used as such for 25 or 30 years, might have been converted into an event center, a gathering center when they built another school. But it's the age-old question, how do you fund the schools? And here we are some 160 years later, 130 from Schoolhouse 33. And when that schoolhouse was, was built and Utah became a state, I was walking by the marker today. Let me pull up the photo, and then we'll tap Julie in so I get my historical facts correct. In 1890, the territorial legislature passed the Free School Law, making education available to all children. It was three years later that that 33rd district school was built, and at that time, the Salt Lake School District was divided into three sections, Salt Lake, Granite, and Jordan. And we've got Julie Jackson on the phone or on the video now, who is running for a spot in that Granite District, and even that is now divided up, right? There's districts within the district. But how are you, Julie?
I'm doing so great. It's so interesting to hear all of that history, and it reminded me, I have a photo up in my, in my hallway of my grandmother, who taught school at Holiday School. It was called Holiday School, but now it's the Holiday City Hall. That building, my grandmother used to teach second grade, and there's a photo up in my hall that shows her with her second grade class. And it's making me think, oh, my goodness, that second grade photo looks exactly like the second grade photos we still take. It's like the exact same setup, the same, I don't know, and it kind of is making me say, wow, what has changed? Because a lot has changed, but some things, hmm, some things we should rethink.
Yeah, and the essence of it is where does the money come from? How is the money spent? And sort of the educating our educators? Because if you go back and look at, you know, the history, the prairie history, the teachers themselves were oftentimes uneducated.
Completely. And it's a really tricky thing, too, because, you know, one of the challenges I see the public schools have is that you get your teachers, and they've been taught on the, on the higher education level, you know, at University of Utah or wherever higher ed that they've been taught. But they haven't, they are not necessarily understanding best practices for 2020. They're sometimes behind, and they don't know all the things they need to know. That's one of the partnerships I think would be really interesting to make, is to make sure to, like, figure out how to make sure those teachers know how to be innovative for the present, not for 10 years ago.
Yeah, for job security, to keep themselves relevant, to keep up with the fast-paced technological changes in education.
For sure.
Because, but let's, let's back up. We're kind of ahead of ourselves, because we spoke the other day. But introduce yourself, Julie Jackson.
Oh, sure.
Give us your short little bio.
Okay, yeah, so I'm Julie Jackson. I grew up here in Holiday, Utah, and went to Olympus High, and as well as some schools in the Compton Network. I went to Bonneville and Oakwood and Woodstock Elementarys. And my husband also graduated from Olympus High, so we both grew up in this area. Moved, I was a teacher here, and I taught, I, I expected that I would be an English, like an AP English teacher at Olympus High or Skyline High, because I thought that was kind of the pinnacle of a person's career in education, was the AP teacher at, you know, one of those schools. But I finished my student teaching in the middle of the year in January, and I just said, kind of put my resume out and said, anybody who's willing to hire me, I'm interested in a job. And I got a call from Horizonte Instruction and Training Center in Salt Lake District. And I didn't know what that was, because that doesn't sound like a high school. But I called and said I would accept an interview, and I, I went there to take the interview, and it was, I walked in and it was like an office building. It didn't look like a high school, so I was very unsure of what I was getting myself into. And I walked in there, and it was the alternative high school for Salt Lake City School District. So they, they had kids who'd been labeled failures in their traditional schools and had been essentially kicked out of school.
Vocationally oriented?
What's that?
Like vocationally oriented kind of alternative school, or no?
No, alternative means if you get kicked out of school because you are not passing your classes, you go to this school, and they find alternative ways for you to be successful. That's what the alternative word is about. So we had, and, and really, we didn't consider ourselves an alternative high school. We considered ourselves non-traditional, that we took non-traditional students, we taught them in non-traditional ways, and we had a non-traditional structure, and all of those three things were true, and still are true of Horizonte. So we had kids who'd been kicked out of school, teen parents, adults who never finished their high school degree, as well as immigrants and refugees who wanted to learn English. And I got to teach all of those groups of students. And it was an amazing experience, because growing up over here on, in Olympus and in Holiday, when I walked into that building, the first thing that I saw was this group of about five guys from Sudan, who were approaching me, and, you know, they're so tall, and their skin is so dark, and they had the traditional tattooing on their face. And I just said, wait, you live in my community? Like, I hadn't, where have you been? I've never seen you. You know, and everywhere I went in that building, I was like, where have you been? I've lived here for 22 years, and I've never seen you. You know, it was just this incredible shock to recognize how much I had just been in one little area and not seen the full story. And I spent that year.
Utah's changed over time, too, because there's more and more immigrants here, people displaced from violent places around the world. It's interesting that you mentioned the Sudan, and then I'll let you get back to that story. But I met a couple of young guys hiking just a week and a half ago over on Mount Olympus, and I stopped and chatted it up with them, and they were from the Sudan. And I came here when they were one and six years old. The older one had some memory of home, of course. The younger one had no memory of home, but they've been, you know, enjoying life in Utah for some 30 years.
I love it. It's so interesting, too, that, so one of the things, I, I, since I haven't been a teacher there, the last few years, I've been the outreach coordinator at Horizonte, and the idea is that I've been in charge of bringing people in to volunteer at Horizonte, as well as getting our students opportunities to volunteer in the community. And it's been interesting to, one of the things that we do is bring, because part of the goal of Horizonte is to bridge that gap between the disadvantaged and the advantaged, and recognize, and get everyone to recognize they're all part of the same community. So one of the things that we've done.
Yeah, for education to link to employment.
Right, and there's that part of it, too. Well, one of the things that we've done that I just love is we bring in groups of people who will come in just to chat with our English speakers, who are immigrants and refugees, and they just come in for an hour or an hour and a half and sit at a table and talk with individual students. And they usually talk about their stories of where they came from, and they're practicing their English. But the people who come in are always amazed at, to learn what has happened in the world, and to learn what is happening in their own communities. And there's this bonding that happens that is just a beautiful thing to watch. And I always say that those conversations are the beginning of world peace, because that's where these two people who don't have any clue how the other person lives, they come together and gain a respect and an admiration, and they're both lifted from it, you know? So that understanding, I'm so glad you have those conversations with people.
It's interesting you say that, because that's part of what podcasting is, is that relating to people. And, you know, no matter how different we think we are, the human experience is really a shared experience. We all have the same limited emotions, and we all experience love and loss.
Super interesting. That's so true. I love that idea that it's about a human connection.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And technology allows us to do it, but let's talk about schools a little bit with online and funding. I'm always curious about, and with you, it's really just kind of the essence of why I'd want to talk to you. But, you know, where does the money come from and what is the money spent on? And right now, well, one thing that I see in sort of our culture is maybe too much emphasis on the giant football stadium under the lights and less money spent on other creative things. So I always worry about that. What are we going to spend the money on? And now with COVID and remote learning, is it effective? Are we educated enough on it? Do we need more technological resources? So let's talk a little bit of COVID and remote learning, just your experiences, feelings, and philosophies on it.
Sure. Well, I've been, one of the things is that when Granite District, when our school board decided that they were going to send kids back to school, and they were going to ask teachers to teach both in-person and online. You know, I've been a teacher, but I haven't had to do that. So I really was curious to know how that was going to work, and I kept hearing teachers talking about how this is going to be such a disaster, and we don't know how we're going to do it. And so I was really interested to find out how that was going to work. And then, and so I decided to sign up to be a substitute teacher, because I also knew that there would be more people who needed to stay home. If you have any symptom, you ought to stay home, right? So I knew there'd be greater need, so I signed up to be a substitute. And then a teacher from Skyline High called me and said, I am going to take a leave of absence because I don't want to teach in person. And so I'm wondering if you'll be a long-term substitute for my class? And I thought it was a great opportunity for me to learn how it feels to do both modalities. So I have been teaching in-person as well as in doing distance learning with my students. It's been a really interesting experience, because at first it was wonky, and I'd say that I did not succeed very well. At this point, I think my students who are online are able, they have access to a pretty good education in comparison to what they do at, in in-person. I would say almost equal. But the difference is that it's much harder for my online students to access that. And the reason is my students luckily have internet access, and they have electronics that they can use, so they are ready or a step ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's the first threshold question. Do you have?
Unbelievable.
The electronics and the connection in the family homes?
The Granite School District has one Chromebook for every student, so every single student has a Chromebook that they can use, which is pretty remarkable, if you ask me.
And I saw a thing on the Salt Lake website the other day, that 99% of the students have internet connection.
Yeah, in Salt Lake School District?
I think, I think I saw that.
They've done a huge push. I'm so proud of them if they've gotten to that position, because.
That's impressive, right?
It was much lower than that in March, so that's fantastic. And yeah, I don't have a single student who doesn't have an internet connection, so that's really lucky. But I do think that the thing, so that first step, my students' needs are met, but the second step is being able to learn through technology is a totally different thing. And I have six of my students who are completely failing, and they are failing because of two reasons. Either they have a 504 plan that makes it hard for them to learn anyway, and that is exacerbated by using technology. A 504 plan is where you have a plan where teachers need to make accommodations for your learning, because you have a different learning style or something like that, or something that makes it tricky for you to learn in the traditional manner. So it's harder to accommodate, I mean, it's harder to like, especially ADD, which is what most of my students are. Technology is so hard for someone with ADD, because think about the amount of clicks that you have to go to get to an assignment. I don't know, I'm going to say it might be 10 clicks before you can get to an assignment. Every one of those is an opportunity for a distraction or for a failure, like you click on it and something goes wrong, and that's a really hard thing for students with ADD to deal with.
Yeah, hard enough to be present when you're present.
Right, you just, and like, everything's one, everything else is one click away.
And for some kids, very intuitive, natural.
Total, yeah, and other kids, it's not intuitive. It is really not intuitive. The other reason my students are failing is because COVID has brought them new emotional, mental health issues that they never have seen before, or that they have seen, but it's been exacerbated, you know? So my other, my other students are severe depression, or I have one who just has kind of unsurfaced bipolar in herself. So those, those kinds of issues make it really hard to do online, even after they have full access to what's going on, and after there's a good full curriculum on there, you know? So it's kind of a tricky situation for those students.
And what do you think the answer is for the six that you said are failing that don't, with doing it online? What is the answer to bring them back? Can programs be modified? Can different programs be developed? What do you, what, what do you see as some of the solutions to that?
Well, I wouldn't be able to tell you exactly what the solution is, but I will give you all my ideas of things that we're trying, because since this is all new, jury's out on what's going to work, but we're going to keep trying and trying and trying until we reach them, you know? For me, I have, I emailed each of my students and got no response. Then I emailed their parents and got no response. Then I texted their parents from my personal phone, which is against school policy.
I don't want to get too troubled here.
But I wasn't going to let my students fail, so I texted their parents, and their parents, all, all of those parents, at this point, I had probably 15 or 20 that were failing. All of those parents got back to me except for two. So all of them got back to me via one of those three methods. At that point, we were able to make individualized plans with, with all of them. I've made an individualized plan. You know, there are maybe four that I did not get to make, that I couldn't get to get with me to get an individualized plan. And of those, all of them but two are now succeeding. So an individualized plan really worked for the majority of them, which means that's why I only have six and not 20, right? But for the six, man, I have met with them every other day after class to help them get through assignments. I have modified assignments for them, and now we're at the point where we're changing what the assignment is in the first place. Okay, maybe you're not going to succeed on this novel that we're working on. Let's switch to a different one. If you haven't even started reading it yet, let's give you something else that's going to connect with you better. We've also got track.
And have there be that sense of progress and engagement and not be overwhelmed by material that maybe you can't handle.
Right, well, and I've been fighting to allow them to have a pass/fail option. So there are just, I mean, I don't, I don't know if that's of any interest even to know all of those small details. I have more, more things to try in my toolbox, and it's just the next thing, the next thing, the next thing, and we try until it works. And we got something that worked with the other, you know, the rest of those 20 kids. Now we're working, these other six, they're just keep, we're just keeping going on more tool, tools in the toolbox. And the interesting thing about that is that that has to happen teacher by teacher, because, you know, it's different for every kid, and it's different for every subject matter. So.
You know, we've had the debate for years about the size of classrooms and the effectiveness of teaching, you know, in a class of greater than, say, I don't know what the numbers are, but 25 or 30, right? Now we've got this new paradigm of online that it'll be interesting to see how it plays out, exactly how the resources of a teacher's time are allocated, because I know that many of them are under pressure for, you know, the in-class teaching, as well as the added pressure of online and additional hours, and it feeling like suddenly they have two jobs instead of one.
Well, most certainly, and one thing that is for sure, I mean, in my book, is that this is temporary, that this, like, teaching both things is, has got to be temporary. It, it's not something that teachers can sustain. It won't, teachers can sustain it, actually, but the, the quality of what they can teach is lowered, and we, I don't think that's acceptable. So I, I will not support letting this continue. I do think that education will be completely changed once this pandemic is over. So I think that we'll move forward. There will be great progress and innovation because of this. At least I plan that there will be, that we will innovate. But I, I do not think that we'll continue to ask teachers to do what we're doing right now. And as for like, how that affects things like, how many people are in a person's classroom and things like that, I think you could see some changes to that, because I think you could see more people choosing online classes for certain classes. And in an online class, there's an argument right now that an online class can be as big as you want. I don't really know that I agree with that argument, because there's still grading, there's still an individual there that you need to connect with.
Yeah, can you raise your hand and ask questions?
Yeah, it's, it's not like, it's not like, oh, you don't have to fit so many bodies in the room, and so therefore it's not as hard. Like, there's still individuals that you need to reach out to, but there is that argument going on, that kind of assumption going on in education right now.
And of course, the university classes are bigger, right? And you're getting, the university classes can be bigger, undergrad classes, right?
Right, those are enormous. And, and high school classes are allowed to be much bigger than elementary. In fact, even fifth grade classes are allowed to be like 35 or as many as they want, whereas they try to keep, you know, a second grade class to 25 or 28, something like that. So they do have kind of like these steps of, as you get older, that you can take more kids, you know?
Let me get you focused back on the school board. Why are you running for the Granite School Board, and what is it you want to accomplish?
You know, when I was teaching, my students had been kicked out of school, for the most part, not all of them. Some of them just chose to come to our school because it was innovative and inclusive. But at the time, I saw lots of structural problems that created the situation that my students were in. And they came to me, you know, they were behind in credits, like they needed, they had a lot of classes they had to make up because they had failed so many classes. But before you could even address that problem, you had to address the emotional and mental trauma that they had been through in failing out of school. And as I talked with them, I saw so many opportunities where if our structure and the system had been different, I think my students may have been spared that pain and that failure that was going to mark them for the rest of their lives. And I wanted to be a part of changing that structure. I mean, one of the things that is easy to point to, because there's data behind it, is the, the racial diversity. We had, it was 55% of our district at the time, this is in the late 90s, early 2000s, 55% of Salt Lake City School District was kids of color or of different backgrounds other than Caucasian. And my school was 85% ethnic minority, which tells you that there was some disconnect going on there. Either there was blatant racism, which I do think there was that, or they weren't meeting their specific needs. They weren't being inclusive enough and recognizing that not everybody is the same. And so.
I often think it turns to economics and opportunity, and I think about the kids and their parents. You know, we tend to think that all kids have a, you know, a stable home and that computer and the parent that's, has the ability and the incentive to work with them as part of that education, but not everybody is similarly situated. And I think that the kids that fall between the cracks there at school are the ones that don't have strong support at home.
Yeah, I, I would agree that that is often, very often the case. And, you know, and it's interesting, because even though I'm saying to myself, as a teacher, I was saying, come on, schools, like, get it together and don't do this to my students. I could also see that the structure needed to change, and that that was, if, if we could change the structure a bit. the structure needed to change, and that that was, if, if we could change the structure a bit, then we could allow teachers more of an opportunity to reach out to these students. Because in my heart, I did not believe that these teachers just didn't care, right? I, they just had too much to do. And they couldn't reach these ones, so we had to create an entire separate school for these kids, you know? And um, if, if you ask them, I think all of them would have loved to have been spared. Um, they loved Horizonte, like, they rarely went back to their other schools once
Trauma that it took to get them there.
Yeah, but the trauma, they would happily go without.
Really, the kind of a frightening prospect when you talk about it in terms of trauma to these kids. Um, that, that's what our system is producing. And you talk about the racial stereotyping too, and I think that sometimes we can subconsciously be uh, discriminatory, maybe against a kid, you know, who's got the baggy jeans and dressed like a rapper uh, here in, in Utah, uh, you know, that we uh we cannot be as open-minded as we, as we need to be and give everyone a chance to, you know, express themselves and uh and find a way to learn and, and grow and be accepted. But it just, I find that striking, uh, when you talk about trauma to these kids.
Well, you know, my, my um, example of the trauma always goes back to, I mean, you know, I, it was sort of a joke that I had with my students. Um, every Monday you'd get new students or throughout the week, but often on Mondays. Um, whoever got kicked out of school that week would show up in your class the following Monday. And um, so you'd have a whole class full of kids, and every Monday you had new students or throughout the week. And you had to be prepared to have a new student whenever they showed up. And um
Stigma.
What's that?
They're showing up with that stigma to the group that has already been stigmatized.
Well, and they know how it feels. So these, um, the kids who come in new, they don't understand that um we have dealt with that stigma here. And that the students who are here, they are understanding that they aren't failures and that they are capable of great things. And so they come in feeling that way, and the first day, I mean, it was like I wish I knew the percentage of students who did this. I would say the majority of my students. They would come in the first day and in, during the first class, they would tell me to F off. And it happened so often that it just was uncanny. That immediately what they wanted
Got them, take that to school in the first place.
They wanted to let you know, I know who you are, I know you're in power, and guess what, you're not gonna, you're not gonna do that to me. What someone else did to me, you're not gonna do it to me too, you know? And the fact that they would come in and see me and immediately assume that is just unbelievable. And my students It's gonna happen, they'd all know what to do, like, we'd take, you know, we'd go chat and, you know, we'd work it out. I mean, everybody knew, it would happen and everybody would kind of roll their eyes like, oh, they're okay, I guess we're gonna do that. So they really, they really did have this sense of coming to school and not feeling love, but feeling fight. I think that's traumatic.
Uh, incredible stuff.
Yeah.
And you've got a family of your own, four kids?
Yes, I've got four, um four amazing kids. They all are, um, they all have many great advantages. And um, I recognize it, and I, I see every day how um, even though they have their own struggles, um they were just born with, you know, they were born ahead of the game in um, education, as far as education is concerned. I've got um, one kid or one, two kids who are in gifted programs. Um, and one kid who um, just is kind of a mainstream kid. And um, all three of those are in advanced class and honors, and they do well in school and they work really hard. And I have another What's that?
Go on, go on, no finish.
And then I have one other son who also does well in school, but um, he's on a five oh four plan, so he has ADD and needs special accommodations. And every day of school is a huge struggle for him. And it's a huge struggle for me and from, and for my husband. And um, so it's been really interesting to have that experience of um, you know, my other three kids, they fit into academia perfectly. They're exactly what our current system was built for. But with my other son, we have to constantly ask the system to bend to him. Because the system is constantly asking him to bend to them. We have to con, just go in there and say, just a minute, just a minute, this is not gonna work for this learner. Here's how this is gonna work for him, and here's what we need for you to do. And so far, they, everyone has always, every teacher has always done the bending when we asked for it and when we made them mindful of it, because they all want to bend to students and help. Um, but they don't always know, and they also don't know that they can make exceptions for students. So that's been a really good experience for me. And um, while he is not as successful in school as my other three kids, man, his success means a lot more to me. Uh, and I, I consider him really successful, um. And so I understand the difference between um, what success means for different people.
You've got it from uh, the inside, inside the family, inside the classroom, uh, on boards before, this won't be the first time you've been on a school board.
Right, I was on a school board in um, Washington State. And I learned amazing things from my friends in Washington who helped me learn what it meant to be on a school board, taught me about uh, where the finances come from for schools. Um, taught me, I mean, taught me about policy and even Robert's rule of or, uh, laws of order, which I did not underst- I didn't know about, I mean, they, they took me from a rookie and, and made me something to uh, someone who's a contributor, so I really appreciate those board members.
Sure you wanna do that, uh, these days? Is it, um, you know, a hot seat being on a school board?
Uh, yes, it certainly is. And when I um, decided to run, it was before COVID started. And I wanted to run because I knew that I could make a difference. But um, the The more
Think that plan a bit now, right?
Well, the more I get into this, the more I just, before it was like, oh, that would be great, and I think I could do some good things, but now I feel an urgency, I feel
Schools than families with uh, children, you know, you'll always have uh, that fight, but I think it's really important that we uh, educate the educators. You spoke about that with me the other day. Um, um, uh, it's not uh, lost on me, I'm talking about mistakes and forgiveness after my failed attempt recording with you the other day, uh, right, we had to do that again. Um, but talking about, you know, how equipped are the teachers dealing with the technology? And are we doing enough to educate our teachers?
Yeah, well, I, I think what I brought up there was that I was really interested to find out. Um, when I started at Skyline, I was really amazed at how many teachers didn't know how to do things. I, I wanted to um, attach a video to um, Canvas, which is the uh, the platform that the district uses for kids to access all their work. And I wanted to make sure that the kids could have permission to access it, that it didn't say, no, you, you're denied access or something. So I went to my neighbor's um, classroom and said, hey, do you know how to do this? Could you help me? And they said, oh, I have no idea how to do that. And then I went to the next teacher and that person didn't know either. And it took me four teachers and a vice principal before I finally found a person who knew how to do that. And that really was eye-opening to me. Because here it was September, and since March, these teachers have been teaching online. And here were all these people who did not know how to put a video online that and I'm not sure what the situation is of why they don't know that. To me, there's something really unacceptable about that. And there must be something happening on a district level that is making it so that we need, you know, we aren't getting out of our teachers, this understanding and this education that they need. But whatever it is, we need to fix it. Um, while I do think it's a problem, and I'm, and I, I wish that it weren't going on, I also think that this is, this is a time for mercy. This is a time for reaching out your hand and offering help. Um, this is a time for assuming best intent and for um looking for ways to help rather than criticize, so
Especially when you talk about the mental health of the children, because I think that that's also a reflection of their parents' conditions, because it's been unsettling for everyone. And even now with this sort of new reality, I think, I have a theory that people are still now incredibly stressed out, but have become accustomed to it. So are kind of not even aware of it as much. Uh, but you can't, you can't fool the kids, you know, the kids know the energy of the house and uh, and, and the stress of it. And I think there needs to be a real emphasis on that, on the mental health as well as the, you know, there's been uh, aspects of the physical nature of uh, COVID, but now we're really seeing, you know, the mental health effects uh, being played out.
For sure, and I think that when it comes to education, you need teachers who are understanding and kind and flexible with students. And you need students and parents who are understanding and kind with their teachers. Because their teachers are also facing serious mental health issues. I mean, most, not all, some kids are really worried about their health going back to school. But the majority do not seem to be, in my mind. But the teachers are worried about their health, they're older, they're higher risk, they have reason to be more worried. And that really takes its toll on, on a person, you know? And especially when you have all these high school kids, you know, I should, I should make my plug for my community's Holiday in Mill Creek. In our community, we've got to be responsible. We've got our teachers who are in there teaching, putting themselves on the line. And students who, and families who are not necessarily that worried. Well, I don't know if they're not worried about co- getting COVID or what, but there seem to be things happening in our community that are not necessarily responsible when it comes to minimizing the impact of COVID. And those, uh, uh, you know, while someone may not be worried about their sixteen-year-old um, getting COVID, I hope that we'll start thinking about how that sixteen-year-old is going to be sitting next to a sixty-five-year-old teacher at school, who we are worried about. And, and we've got to make some decisions based on caring about these teachers who are in our classrooms. And I did not vote for them to be in class at this point. But I am gonna do what it takes to try to keep them as safe as possible because the reality is, they are in a precarious situation.
Yeah, um, it's risky, and I hear what you're saying, that we need to uh, do our best or maybe better to help minimize that risk. And then part of what I think happened, Julie, we go from that complete lockdown, now we're back out. We kind of lose sight of this invisible uh, threat, but that uh, high risk is alive and well in schools. Um, and it's not going anywhere. It'll be interesting to see how it develops as, as it goes along. Uh, but Julie, we've been going for a while now. You wanna give us a pitch to your website and uh, why people should vote for you? We'll try to wrap it up here a little bit.
Thank you so much, I'd love to do that. So my website is www.votejulijackson.com. And one thing that I do on my website that might be of interest is I keep an idea board. So whenever I hear ideas in the community, I post them there, because I want people to see them. And I want us to be thinking of ideas of how we can innovate in our um, society. I have a whole list of COVID ideas that I'm about to put on my website. Um, so they're not on there yet, I just haven't got a chance
Little suspense, I'll have to go back and look later.
Yes, I've been collecting them in my journal, and I'll be publishing those next week. Um, and then on social media, I'm on Instagram and Facebook at Vote Julie Jackson. Um, and there I like to do things like um, give, I, I like to educate. So I will give recaps of what's going, what happened at school, at a school board meeting, what's going on in the district, what's going on in the schools that I'm specifically um, hoping to represent. Um, and I also do a substitute video journal to tell you kind of what things I'm learning while I'm in the schools. And um, so you, it, there's some really good information there.
Plathora of resources is what it sounds like.
I hope it is.
Um, that's great, Julie. And the website again, Vote Julie Jackson?
VoteJulieJackson.com, yeah.
It's been a pleasure, I'm glad you knocked on my door. I joked the other day, it's Halloween season. I got nervous with the politician knocking at my door, but it was a, not a trick, but a real treat to meet you. And uh, I wish you well and uh, good luck. And feel fortunate that you are in the position you are and doing what you're doing. I think it's great, and I uh, feel inspired by it and totally impressed uh, with you. So, good luck with that, Julie. And if you're out on Halloween night with the kids, feel free to knock on the door, yeah.
Oh, thank you, Ted, I certainly will, that's so kind of you. And um, thanks for having me, I appreciate you educating people about voters and, and issues in our area. I think it's hugely important, so thanks for doing that.
I appreciate you, and no one's torn down your sign yet, it's still out there.
Yay, it'll happen.
I promise I won't put razor blades in it, just so you know. Uh, best of luck, Julie Jackson, I'll follow up with you, Julie.
Okay, thank you so
Fifty-minute mark, and thank you for the redo. Uh, talk with Ted, gonna end it for the day, uh, I'll be back.
Okay.